Thank you very much, Marshall. All right, so welcome to Gregor Smith, who's the building committee member. And thank you for being here tonight to talk about the town hall generator. If you want to give us an update, some background and an update on the placement. We do have the document showing us where it's going up on board docs.
Okay, great. So we have looked at, I think, a pretty full range of options for how best to site the generator on town hall property. And with several fits and starts, we ended up with the decision that there's the recommendation that it be located at what is the southeast corner of the original building. I'm sorry, northeast corner. So right in that corner where the the EV charging stations are and the the switch that was installed for the temporary generator. A reason, I know there was thought on the part of many that the best place to put this generator would be in that sort of nook, that corner formed by the original building and the new addition. That it was sort of out of sight back there. But there were a couple of problems that were identified. John Alcott, a landscape architect, who lives here in town, helped me come up with some pros and cons. And one of the things he pointed out very quickly was that there's an underground utilities in that area, which we would prefer not to cover with a concrete pad with a generator on top. Also, there's a slope there. It slopes down towards the connector of the addition. And that's, we would have to deal with that slope. It's not a good place to put the generator. We, in order to get it up off of the slope, we'd have to move it towards the, towards Main Street, which makes the generator more visible. So defeated the whole purpose of that. So again, ultimately, we determined that the best location was is it something, when you say, I should stop you for a moment, Lynn, to ask, does everybody have the board documents in front of them, or is it's not going to be put on the screen? Okay.
So actually, if anybody's watching, maybe we should share the screen. It'll be easy for somebody else to see it. Is that what you're saying, Gregor?
Yes.
Who's on the, who's on the meeting?
Debbie, I don't know if you have it, or if Kevin can share it. Who would like to share the screen? So I have to give him permission.
I can.
Thanks, Dick.
But you gotta give me a chance. I don't do this. All right, often, the first thing I have to do is
I'm happy to do it if you'd rather.
Yeah.
You have it up, Marshall?
I do. I have it up.
Oh, I have the share screen. I'm sorry. I do have it. Not to take it away from you, but I have it. Everybody have it?
Yep, yep. There we go.
Good.
Do you want to back it up, Dick, just to the bigger picture to show everybody where that arrow is pointing?
So you want me to zoom in, you say?
No, I mean, this is
Picture number two of the three, I think.
Yeah, go to slide two. You're on slide three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe we should have Marshall driving it.
If you want to, I'm happy to do it.
Which one do we want? This one?
Two. No, no, yes. No. Number two, it's a photograph. It's before that.
Number two, got it.
There it is. There it is. Lovely. Okay. Can't, you can't miss that then.
Yeah, put an arrow there, Gregor.
Beautiful.
Though the arrow seems to be just ever so slightly off on where it would actually be.
Yeah, it's pointing to the sidewalk.
We will, we will forgive the graphic capabilities of whoever put that arrow on there then.
Oh, yeah, you know, she's, she just doesn't know what she's doing.
So one of the, there are several reasons why it seemed to make sense to us ultimately. And when I say we, we discussed this at length with the town hall building committee. And this is the recommendation of the committee. This is also presented to the historical commission, and they agreed that this made sense, that this is the best location. There are, as you know, several items here, the charging stations, the equipment on the, on the wall of the building that compromised this location already. And actually, if you were to step back from this, where this picture is taken, so that you can see the entire facade, main facade of the building, of the original building, to the left, you will see grass and more of a park-like setting. To the right,
Did you, I'm sorry, did you go to slide one? There we go, and just scroll up. There we go. Thanks.
It starts, it does start to give you a sense that to the left, there's grass, trees. Again, more of a park-like setting. To the right, you have a parking lot. And when it's full of cars, you see the cars. And so we thought that by putting the generator here, it was an opportunity to address a problem that we already have. If we put the generator there with the other equipment and then surround it with some plantings, we can start to hide the stuff that we have there, as well as hide the generator. Doesn't go away completely, but it softens it up considerably. And as John Alcott, the landscape architect, who was helping me, and I don't think he's on the call right now. I did ask if he would be able to join me. As he says, it starts to put the the town hall building, the original building, on a bit of a pedestal by framing it a little bit better with greenery to both sides. Also, this is where the utilities are. We need access to natural gas service to power the generator. That's where the service is. We need access to the main electrical service. That's where that is. And so all things considered, it just seemed to make sense to us. And if we were to scroll down to the actual scheme, it's scheme two A.
That?
Yes, please. Thank you. This planting plan is a very, a fairly simple plan. It does require having to remove, the siding of the generator does require for us that we remove a piece of sidewalk pavement. Currently, the sidewalk along the parking lot continues straight through towards Main Street. And we would have to eliminate that section so that you would have to take the spur around the outside corner. And it's not like it adds a whole lot of linear footage for someone to have to walk from the parking lot to the main entrance of the building. The plantings themselves are, they're all native plants. And they are hardy plants. The intent is to come up with a concept that doesn't require maintenance of any sort, or at least of any consequence. And we were on a call with Gary this morning, and I think Gary's on the call. And we discussed the, probably the biggest challenge really is ensuring that the plantings get established. And so there is going to be some watering that has to be done. But we don't anticipate that this will require much in the way of additional work for Parks and Cemetery to cope with. This is not flowers. Once these shrubs and, and a new tree get established, they should be good on their own. This is also the best location in terms of dealing with access for the generator for maintenance purposes. If we, especially if we have to deal with access during the winter time and there's two feet of snow in the ground, it's easier dealing with the snow here than it is tucked around the back corner. So the, the generator vendor loved this site. From his perspective, this is where I want it. That's what he said.
Gregor, can I ask you, what does it look like from the back side? It looks very pretty from the front. Is it filled in? Do the plants cover the generator on the backside?
So, so the short answer is no. Because the planting that is separating the generator from the sidewalk, those are low. I believe, we'd have to check, but I think those are grasses. Yeah, ornamental grasses, of course. I'm reading the notes. And, you know, they die back during the winter and then grow up again in the spring. And so you're definitely, the generators will be much more visible in the winter time from that side. Now, we could consider moving it forward or to the right a little bit on this drawing and adding some more plant, the plant material that might be evergreen and provide a little more screening year round. So that's, that's a detail that we could ask John if he can respond to.
John, are you on the call?
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see him here. I was just going through the, scrolling through.
I don't see him either. Gregor, what are those seven boxes?
Underneath the generator?
Yes.
Those are paving stones. It's a concept for paving stones. So, so that someone who needs to service it can get around the generator and not have to tramp through the shrubbery.
And again, I, I can make a comment if I may.
Sure, boy.
Gregor, I agree totally with the plan. When, before we decided that we needed a generator, we put that box on the side of the building to provide a hookup for a temporary rental generator. And, and where you're putting this is precisely where the rental generator would have sat. And in addition to that, since that box is there on the side of the building, it's very easy to make the electrical connections that you want, rather than, if you put it on the other side of the building, it would be a real problem and much more complicated trying to get the electric, electrical supply to the circuit breaker panels in the basement of town hall. So this is the most logical place to put it. I'm pleased to see that you've got access around the thing so that when somebody needs to work on it, they can do that without tearing up the shrubbery. And I would also tell you that this thing is going to be in a box that really isn't going to be terribly ugly. So it, it's not going to stand out. I see an awful lot of them that are, that are green colored. So, you know, it's not going to look like a sore thumb. I'm in total favor.
And if I may add, I did speak with the vendor about color. And, you know, you can get it in any color you want, except as long as it's off white in this case. But, but he said it is paintable. So that becomes a maintenance issue over the long term. Because then, you know, every, every eight or 10 years, you're probably going to have to paint it, repaint it. But, but he said it is, people paint these boxes all the time and they're designed to be painted.
Gregor, how far away from the building is the generator? I tried to picture in this.
Can I?
What is the building?
May, may I share my screen? Because I went to Google Street View and grabbed a picture of it that gives us the whole thing, which I think might help us envision it a little bit better.
Sure. Do you have share ability?
Well, I do.
I have to get rid of it first. I'm working on that.
Actually, it says I can, I can basically force you to drop it. So there you go. Do you see this now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep. So I think if I have this correct, that the generator is basically going to go there. This part is going to be filled in with greenery, right? All of this in here. So do I have where the generator would be more or less correct?
It'll be a little closer to the building. It'd be effectively on top of where the pavement is currently.
Okay.
And that's about
More like right here?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right. And that's about five or six feet from the building, which is required. I forget if it's five or six, this required per code.
Five.
Five. Thank you, Donna. We can't put it closer. I did ask him about that. In some situations you can, but in this case, the fact that we have windows right by the generator because of exhaust, you can't get closer than five feet. Also, with the wood siding, you can't get closer than five feet.
Okay. And with it located there, do you think it's possible to put some additional plants so that it's not quite so visible to the cars that are pulling up or the people that are walking towards the front door?
I would, I would absolutely think so. And, and I'll review that with John. Make sure he understands about that concern.
Marshall, did you want to be an artist in another life?
Yeah, I mean, but this is as good as it gets. So, you know.
I got a seat for you, Marshall.
By the way, Marshall, I believe more of that pavement is going to come out. Well, now that I realize that the generator is where the generator is, yeah, so it's probably really back to, you know, back into here, just cutting off.
That's right. That's right. Yep.
Chairman, might I add something?
Certainly, Donna.
So the warrant article to pay for this was $40,000. The generator was 27, or quoted at 27 on the other side of the building. The vendor has stated that if it got moved over to this side, that the cost would be less. Of course, it would be more on other options that we chose, which enables the landscaping to, we can really do a good job with the landscaping, knowing that the generator will probably come in and say it 25 or around there. So we do have quite a bit of money that we can, that will enable the, a good, a good planting, a good landscaping area for here. So I just wanted to let you know that it will be covered, most likely, be covered under the warrant article.
That's great. Thank you, Donna. So Gregor, anything else? Marshall?
Leave his hat in.
Leave Marshall alone.
I need to focus. I think he's bored. Any other questions for, thank you for disengaging. Any other questions for Gregor about this placement?
So Gregor, let me just ask, the original one that we seem to have been talking, well, maybe not the original one, but was on the opposite corner of the building. As you said, not in the back corner, but closer to the front. The idea of moving it back further was to make it less visible from the street, so to speak. But why was it, why wasn't it not a greater consideration of bringing it back forward? So it wasn't as much of a sore thumb, so to speak, in the front of the building, right on that corner, that, because that corner represents what we're trying, very hard to protect, which is the town common. If you're standing on the town common and the thing's around the corner, it's a little bit better. If you come down High Street, yeah, okay, you can see it there. But the idea of having it around the, the south side of the building seemed like a much better place from the point of view of maintaining the integrity of town hall.
Well, actually, I'll, I'll disagree with you on that, Dick, because it's so visible for Main Street. And especially as you're going north, you're coming from town, heading north on Main Street. It's, it's very visible there. And the historical commission was not keen on that at all. They, if it was going to be located there, they wanted it tucked back over closer to the addition, to the connector of the addition, where it would hopefully start to disappear.
I remember that discussion pushing it back. But they felt that it was better to have it out on, on the north corner where you could see it from the common. Okay.
Yes. Well, the reason, the reason, again,
That's an answer. That's an answer.
Well, it's, it's trying to, it's an opportunity to make an existing problem less of a problem. We've got that clutter there already. And if by putting the generator there, it's just one more piece, it doesn't make that clutter any worse. But we now have the opportunity to do some landscaping around it so that we can not just address the screening of the generator, but address the screening of the other clutter that's already there.
I mean, basically, I think what you're saying is that is already an exposed kind of unattractive corner of town hall that by using the funds approved for the generator to landscape, well, well, what exactly you said, fix an existing problem, right?
Right.
So we, so we have landscape architect, and that's great, because they have good sense of what's balanced and things like that. One of the things, though, that we have had experience with was having plantings close to the building and not so much the plantings. We did have those huge rhododendron. They were a real problem. It took them a bit to get taken down finally because we were going to do it at the town hall. But having those kinds of things close to the building has proven not to be good. The one thing I ask about is the deciduous tree. I assume that, or maybe it's trees, it does say single tree. To make sure that it's not a particularly big one, that it's one of the types that maintained it being small, because otherwise it becomes, it overpowers the town hall. But more importantly, it also adds to the idea of moisture and bugs and all that sort of thing.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right, Dick. And, and John has purposely identified a species of tree that is a small tree. There is currently one tree there now, and this is just adding one more. All the other plantings are relatively low. I don't think they get taller than five feet or so. And it's a variety. Some are 18 inches, some are four to five feet. And that's mature height.
Yep. So in some ways, this is almost like a garden area. If somebody, I know how people walk. If somebody chose to go from the sidewalk alongside the building towards the front, could they pass through this, maybe stepping over a few things and that?
Right, well.
Reasonably pass through that?
Well, they could, but it's not intended for people to do that.
And then, and just, just a question, that sidewalk around the planting area, it just already, does it not?
Yes. So we would be removing one straight section of sidewalk that's 15 feet or whatever it is. I don't know. And Gary has indicated that, that would be something that, that DPW could take care of, the highway team could take care of.
I'm sure you've worked technically on this because you did mention the five feet from the building, especially being away from windows and that. But there is one other consideration to other equipment. They're looking for 10 feet typically. I don't know that the meter for gases, other equipment, but I, I assume that that's all been thought through. It's technically all right to put it there. You don't need
It is there. It is currently there.
You don't need a 10-foot clearance from the gas?
Oh, no.
And such?
No, no.
Okay, good. The only last thing I would say is that typically when you put a generator and you try to put it in an area where it's more protected than out in the open. And on this corner of the building, if some car goes flying by or something else, it has a better chance of taking it out. But, or it's just more exposed than, than around the corner. Other than that, great job. Yeah.
Gregor, when you bring the plantings, they won't look like this? They'll probably be smaller and take a couple of years to reach this height, or will it look?
Yes, they'll, they'll take a couple, they'll take a few years to mature.
Okay.
At least some of them will. The grasses, I think, grow pretty quickly. And, and they come back every year. They die down and they come back. It's just as you've seen with some of the grasses. It's more of the same ornamental grasses that are in a couple of places around the building already. But, but the shrubs will definitely take a few years to mature in terms of height.
I really like it, and I like the way it balances the building. It really kind of face frames the building.
I think it's going to really disappear with the landscaping. I really do. I mean, I, I love good landscaping, and this looks very smart.
I agree with the comment that Marshall made a little while ago. That, that particular corner is kind of an ugly corner anyway, and this is going to dress it up, in my opinion.
So Kevin and Gregor, do you need anything from the select board on this, other than our input? What moves this forward?
Nope, that, 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 I'm sure that's, we want to make sure we're transparent. We had a chance to discuss it. I mean, obviously, when we discussed it last, it was in a different side of the building, and just wanted to make sure if there was any red flags or any real concerns that we had a chance to talk through it. Senses, everyone's agreeable to it. And we'll work through some of the more specifics, you know. Gregor, one thing I want to talk to you about too is winter versus spring, summer, fall, what the, what it'll look like, especially, and then as it matures, how it's going to look as well. And we'll, we'll get through that as well. But that great idea is what I wanted to make sure we had a chance to talk tonight.
Great. And timing on this then, for moving forward, when do you envision it being installed and the plantings done?
Donna has two weeks, and one of her goals is to have this in before, at least the pad.
So I may come for the ribbon cutting of this generator. Boy, do you appreciate that. I will, Gary wants to meet with the vendor upon your, just going over today. I will give him a call tomorrow, see what his availability. He wanted to do this shortly before, so I assume that the generator is in. There was a supply chain issue with it. I'm sure that's resolved. So I would say that we're set to go in the next month or so, but.
The one thing that I would add to this is a concern that John has raised, and, and that is that we're pushing the limits of, of spring plantings. And, and he may recommend, depending on how long it takes to get the generator installed, the planting, and to engage a landscape contractor, get the plantings identified with a vendor, you know, with a nursery. If, if this takes us, if the plantings don't happen until June, the concern is that, that over the course of the summer, they'd require a lot more water, otherwise they're going to die in the heat. You need those roots to get established. So he, as he said, the best time to plant these, this kind of plantings is in the fall. And so, which would not be desirable. I know we'd like to have this, since this generator goes in, we'd like the plantings to go in, but that might be a conversation we want to have. If he recommends that we wait, we'll come back to you and talk about it.
Is there a backup plan?
I bet we could put the plantings in right now. I mean, maybe not the ones closest to the, to the generator. But that's such a beautifully open space. I mean, they're going to come along and drop it off from the, from the parking areas there. And right on, they're going to put the pad there, put it right on, and then they're right into the generator, into the electric rather, and the gas. I suspect we could put a bunch of those plantings in now if we wanted to.
They're going to be digging and setting a footing for that. That's going to be a lot broader than the footprint of the base of the generator, I think.
I think, I think it's a precast thing that they bring in and drop on. I bet that's what it is. Maybe not.
Connections are all above, all above ground?
Well, they will have to, they'll have to, they'll have to dig to put some foundation material down. And the, and the, and the pad is a little bit larger, not a lot larger than the generator. But I think the bigger issue, frankly, is the practical one of engaging a landscape contractor, somebody who could come in and do the plantings. And this is not complicated. We don't have any, you know, a bunch of hardscape, for example. This is just about plantings. But we may find, you know, if people are really busy, who knows how quickly we can get them out. But there's also a process I expect that we will have to go through, a procurement process to ensure we get competitive bids. So we would not be able to bring somebody out next week. Plus, plants have to be ordered.
I would also hate to put them in in a rush to beautify something for a few months, only to have them not succeed. And then we need to spend the money to put them in again.
Is there any concern about delaying the installation of the generator until August and then putting in the plantings? Or do we feel it needs to go in right away?
The guy's been waiting for close to nine months.
Who is the guy, Donna?
The vendor, Seacoast Generator.
That we bought it from?
Yeah. I mean, I would hate to hold off on him, but.
Do it.
Donna, could we, could we pour the pad? Can we prep it for the pad? And then before we install the generator, wait till after the And then before we install the generator, wait till after the hot season and and install that and the plants at the same time? And and then let's get the base so we can move pretty quickly from there?
I can see what he says and I would like to, you know, have Gary meet with the vendor and then move forward from there. Obviously, all of your concerns will be taken under consideration and we'll do the best we can.
All right, great. So that, all those details, we can talk offline, but I think, Gregory, you have, and Donna, you have the thoughts of the board that we like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Good job.
Good job, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the EV charges. We had asked if Kevin could bring us back now that the charges have been in for about a year. An analysis that showed us, how much did they cost? Did we make money, lose money? How are they working? And are they getting much usage? So Kevin, I'll turn it over to you. I know you you put some documents up online. Maybe you could just talk us through the analysis.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So we're actually one full year exactly from when we went online. So we have a full year's worth of data. There was some initial hiccups in getting it out on the app for people to participate and use the systems and find it. But we've worked through some of those, those issues at the beginning. In addition, we now have an EV in our fleet, which also changes the calculus a little bit too. In that, this is now a resource internally for our purposes. When we introduced this concept, we received on a forty seven thousand dollar project, ninety six percent of the cost covered by National Grid, which is the highest that of any community in the Commonwealth in the program, which is now significantly different, but at the time, over the two or three years prior of its existence. So we were very fortunate to Lori Timmerman and National Grid for their support in this project. We worked with the Historic Commission and and identified the location based on some of the logistics that we've already talked about with the generator for for needing electricity, et cetera. The the stations were installed. We did a ribbon cutting, again, about a year ago. And one of the things that we've done is we've, you know, like anything new, we've worked through some of the the processes. I want to help us do now that it's been established. We know how it works, has worked, sort of a soft opening. We're starting to see more activity and more people using it, which is great. We're also want to push it even more. It's not only, the intention of it was never to necessarily be a profit center for us. We certainly didn't want to have it as a complete sunk cost. We want, but it is intended to be an amenity for this community and also attract people from outside this community. Its location is one of the best, in my opinion, because you have people who might want to park a charge and they can walk the rail trail, which is only a few steps away. They can walk downtown and buy a coffee or or some food or whatever they choose. They can sit in the common and just enjoy a nice day. And we've seen people do just that. About a couple of months ago, I actually saw somebody parking there at night. And I I went up to him because he had a new Jeep. And I didn't know Jeep actually had an EV. It's a hybrid. But it was, it was brand new and I I approached the gentleman who was at the at the charging station. And I asked him, I said, oh, it's a great vehicle. And we talked a little bit, showed him how to use the and get locked in. And I asked him, you know, where are you coming from? He's like, I'm from Marblehead, but my, my, my daughter has indoor soccer over at over at the fairgrounds and I had some time to kill, so I thought I'd charge the vehicle and check out your downtown. And that was really worn my heart because that's, that's the intent of what we're trying to do with this. So you know, it's, it's been a really good operationally. It's, it's worked really well. We haven't had any, you know, there's been the initial hiccups learning equipment, but there hasn't been any catastrophic breaks or failures or anything like that. I'm going to knock on some wood now that I said that out loud. But it's been, it's been a really good experience. The people that do come and and use it, the people you get to interact with, they, they're so excited to be able to to utilize the equipment, which is, which is what we hoped it would accomplish. But the other side of it is the business component of it, because obviously there was, there isn't, although the upfront cost, the vast majority of it was covered by grants. You know, there is some ongoing costs, the electricity that's used out of it, the ongoing cloud service, and just the the percentage that, the service fee that comes around with it for the use of the equipment that is charged as well. And so I wanted to just acknowledge Donna and Donna Rich for her work in compiling the data. And there's some information up on board docs. It gives you a snapshot of some of the information. I'm going to dive in with some additional information to accompany this, this, the, what you have now to give it a little bit more relativity around it. But you can see that the total cars, and we did a six month breakdown and a full year breakdown. Because after the six month period, I think we started to actually see some more people on a more regular basis. We'd see two or three cars even parked at every given time. I also mentioned this does not include REV and the use of REV when you look at the total counts and the use. And so what we saw was and it is a nice little bar graph as well, shows the usage. The first couple of months while we were getting ready and promoting it, the number of uses were down. But we then saw some people on a regular basis, regular people coming in, but also new people rotating through. And the usage has increased. And we do anticipate that it'll continue to increase as more people purchase electric vehicles. And as more people know about the fact that we have EV charging stations here in Topsfield, right out, right outside our town hall. But just to the dump numbers themselves, looking at the full year, which was April sixth twenty one to April fourth of this year, the gross amount that we received, the two dollars we charged per hour mounted just short of sixteen hundred dollars. Two, ten percent goes back to charge point. So our number, our, our net number there is fourteen hundred forty dollars. We then have the kilowatts. We use about forty seven hundred kilowatts. Were used at those charging stations. That number is a fixed number of how much was used. What's variable is actually the rate that was charged for users. It varies over the course of the year depending on when someone was charging during the time of day, during the season, as the, as the rate flexes, so does the rate. Our last bill, it was twenty seven, per kilowatt hour was twenty seven point six two seven cents. So just as a sort of, and that could flex more. I saw a couple that flexed up a little bit, but that was based on the last bill. And we didn't do a full analysis of every single charge and what that came out to, but to give a general sense of how we're doing. If you take what we earned after the cost, not including the cloud-based service, which I'll touch in a second. We, it was, it was profitable by about a hundred and thirty dollars, a hundred and forty dollars last year. Again, that's, that's the beginning of the year, and the services not being utilized as heavily as it has over the last nine, eight, nine months. We do have a cloud-based service fee that is, I believe, thirteen hundred dollars annually. That's not baked into this. So backing out the hundred and thirty, hundred and forty, we did see, I guess, a loss or a contribution from the town towards the service of about, of just over a thousand dollars last year. So it's, it didn't break even all in cost, looking at the outside component. But what I would also note is with the EV that we purchased, and now that over the last month, chief, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but over the last month, three weeks, month, we've now have the FOB and we're now charging at night here using this equipment. So we're using that rather than using gasoline that we would typically use for a vehicle. So our payback that we initially considered, we now have the equipment that allows us to charge here at town hall for our existing fleet, our existing vehicle, which, which is a benefit to us to have that option for the police department. Until the time comes when we're able to find another opportunity to put a charging station at the police station, if that so choose, if we so choose in the future to do so. But generally, got a lot of really positive responses from people who are using it. And we think the numbers will certainly increase on the usage as we continue to have them here. People learn about it and promote it more in the future. So that was the update. Donna's here, I'm here. Any questions that the the board might have?
Kevin, could you just translate the the two dollar per hour? So if we're looking to see how many cars do we need to pull in to actually break even on this in a given year with the expenses that we know we do have, the the cloud-based and the billing? We've got two dollars an hour for revenue. We've got twenty cents that we have to pay of that for billing, the ten percent. What does it cost us? Or how many kilowatts of energy get expended in that hour that we have to pay for? So it's twenty seven cents per kilowatt times how many kilowatts an hour? So that we could say, you know, we know how much we're making or losing per hour.
I'd have to do the calc on it. I did the thirteen hundred for the cloud-based service, divided that by two dollars an hour. So if we had six hundred and fifty hours gross, that doesn't include any ten percent off the top or anything like that. Looking at six hundred and fifty more hours of use on these charging stations annually to allow us to break even with our costs. Again, that does include the ten percent admin fee coming out.
And it doesn't include the electricity, those additional six hundred and fifty.
We, we have, we have the, these numbers in in great detail. I can share the screen if you want to, but we, we worked this out in the past and we know that the break even, it looked at in different ways, but one of them is the total charging hours per year would be thirty seven hun, thirty four hundred sixty eight is the number of hour, charging hours per year.
That we need to break even?
In order to break even, that would make it a break even based on the billing, based on the hundred and twenty dollars a year for National Grid special, whatever, and for the cloud. Those are the things that we knew about and built into the model when we made the decision. We knew what it was. And and the good news is, you know, we're getting the usage out of it. And as you've excellent work that this provides, it shows that we taking the billing out, the billing cost out, we came up with about four hundred and fifty dollars. And that, as you point out, the, the other two things that are not in this particular document that you gave us, the hundred and twenty plus the thirteen hundred for cloud leaves, as you said, about a thousand dollars that, at this point, we're in the hole. But the, there's more, so it's a thousand dollars. But if we increase the the volume that leads to this, to the rate of up to thirty four hundred hours, then we'd be breaking even. The good reason to to look at this is, one of the things is, should we increase the, the charge that we have instead of two dollars? I don't think so. I think this is a good start. But then if we get up to, you know, the four thousand hours, then maybe we'll think about dropping it down to a dollar eighty instead. So those things will change. But but those are the actual numbers that we had from before and they, we worked them all out.
How does our rate of two dollars an hour compare to, you tell me, how do we fall?
Yeah, so it's. We had that too also when we did this, when we originally put them in. And we know that there are some that are free. Boxer had a couple that were free, but something like a hundred, a dollar eighty to two dollars, two dollars of sweet spot. That's a good.
So we're fine, we're fine.
Very good spot, right.
Okay, Kevin, could you just point me to, if we need three thousand four hundred and sixty eight hours to break even, how many hours, where in this document, did it say how many hours we are currently getting?
Don't know if it has.
I don't think, I, I don't think I boiled it down to that.
Let me, if you bear with me for one second, though, I might look at the back. Yeah, we don't have the, the actual amount of time they spent there. What they, the, the report they provide us is the energy, the kilowatt hours, that's how we factor it in total, gross amount, flex billing service, which is your ten percent, and the net revenue. That's how that, this, the report we run. And that's why it's titled such in the graph, in the in the, in the, the graph or the in the graph that explains the, the four different components of the costs and the, and the revenue and the six six month and twelve month periods. So I imagine, I don't have that. We could, might be able to back into that. I don't know. I'm looking at Doc and she's been the one using the system mostly. Might be able to.
If it's thirty four sixty to break even, it's just under ten bucks a day or ten hours a day.
Yeah, ten hours a day is what, is essentially what it is, right? We, we had it down.
So what are we doing now? What are we currently at? How many hours?
Is that on that graph?
I don't know. That's what I'm trying to find. There are a number of graphs here, so I don't know if I'm missing it someplace.
I mean, it tells you on a very detailed, the statement exactly how many minutes and seconds they were plugged in, but there's, I don't know if it gives you the total. Does it give you the total, Donna?
I have a start time and an end time.
Give you the total though on the start and end.
So we're somewhere in between some places we have and other places we have too detailed information and we need that information in the middle.
Yep. Right, right now, right now, we made four hundred fifty, four hundred fifty dollars net, not earnings, but net. And then you have to pay off this additional fourteen hundred. So it's something in the order of about, it's something, we're about a third of the way towards having a, a, an even amount.
Okay. And so if we were to compute that out, a third of what, whatever that number was, thirty four hundred or?
Yeah, it's thirty four sixty.
We need to earn another thousand dollars because we went about a thousand in the hole. So that's where I was going back to the two dollar per hour. It was like, how many hours additional do we need?
I could probably.
Twelve hundred hours or something like that.
Yeah, taking out the cost of the electricity, the billing. All right, just trying to get a sense of how close are we?
Lynn, if I may, I'd like to make a comment. In my opinion, this isn't, this isn't the thing about money. It was a convenience issue. It was trying, Kevin wanted to try to attract more people downtown or in the area. So it wasn't about money. I'm, I, I was a skeptic almost from the start, Kevin. So, but, but I looked at the list of how many times it's being used and and I was absolutely shocked by how much it's being used because it looks like it's empty most of the time. But the fact of the matter is there, there are people that charge their cars down there overnight. And I hope it's not just our police vehicle, but there, it looks like there are people that charge their vehicles overnight and on a fairly regular basis. So I was a skeptic, but I'm not anymore, but it's not about money. So let's move on.
The whole point of this analysis was to do a financial analysis of, of the project. So that's why we're talking finances right now.
Okay, now, now we, now we've seen our financial analysis and we're not in deep water. We know that, but it's not, it's not an end of the world kind of thing. No, but I would, I would like to be able, when people ask me, I would like to be able to give them some, some better. I agree with everything you said, Boyd, but I still think when, when our answer to somebody who asks is, I don't know, we're kind of roughly there. Give people a lot of confidence in the job that we're doing. I stand by the idea, one hundred percent, obviously. And, you know, just driving by, I mean, my own EV was parked there last night. We know that people are using it, but I, I would like the analysis to tell, so I can tell people, well, we're losing a little bit of money, but blah, 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 or we're breaking even and this is what we get for. Or we're actually this close to making some money like that. That's an important thing to be able to talk intelligently about.
We're five hundred and fifty five hours away from breaking even. We're about a thousand dollars off the mark right now that we contributed as the town to offset the revenues based on a dollar eighty, which takes off the ten percent off the two dollars that we charge and a thousand dollars being in the hole. So you need five hundred and fifty five more hours to cover that cost.
Well, we still have to cover the electricity though for each of those hours.
Yeah, Kevin, be careful. Yeah.
Sorry.
Things though that you mentioned, Kevin, was something about, something varies during the season or at night. I, I didn't follow, what, what's this that's varying?
The rate, the, on the bill, on the the, the basic service fee is typically pretty flat, but the supply services, the, I'm sorry, the supply services, the basic variable versus the total delivery services. So that, there's, those do vary month to month. It's a slight variation when you calculate, calculate those. And it can go up and it can go down depending on, on different factors. So basically, they count for us, for instance, twenty seven cents, twenty seven point six two seven three four cents is of our last bill in the February to March period of this year. And that was the rate. But if you look at some of the rates back last year of what those were being charged.
So Kevin, just so I can understand, what you're talking about is the town's cost of electricity that we have with constellation energy?
So exactly. So we have. So exactly. So we have our, our charging stations.
Directly to do with the EV stations. It has to do with the town as an overall, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Risky there comes out of there. Exactly.
So, so then, then I need to qualify what I said. When we talked about the number of hours, the number of, that was based on the twenty one cents, which was a fairly standard number that we had had from Constellation over time, but I see it's gone up maybe to twenty seven cents. So that, that's something we have, that would push it out to be some additional hours. Um, if, if, uh, if we know the range, uh, you know, we can calculate it to anyone to find out what we need for break even. But thank you. I, now I understand the variance is in what Constellation month to month charges us based on the contract that we have and their demand and whatever they deal with. Thank you.
And I'll do some work to get to the break even. I, I don't want to, I'm trying to do it in real time, but I want to give some good thought behind it before I give you a real number.
Good.
Kevin, do you have a sense that everybody in town knows about this and is aware that there's a charging station? I mean, I know that we did sort of, or you did sort of some awareness when you did a ribbon cutting and it was in the paper, but you know, maybe some ongoing reminders to people that there is an opportunity for them to do, as you said, park your car for a couple hours and, and go do something?
Yeah.
So I'm.
I am.
Stephanie, social media calendar.
Yes. So that, I actually, when we started talking about this, um, Debbie and Donna suggested we post through Stephanie on social media. So that's, I just texted Stephanie while we were talking about getting something up there as a reminder as well.
That's great. Um, thank you for all the, the legwork and the digging to get, uh, the details on this. And now we'll just look forward to that kind of elevator pitch that gives the high level picture of, of, um, how we're doing now and where we're trying to go. So. Okay, um, moving on then to the, uh, Top Seal Community Partnership donation. Um, Kevin, if you want to, uh, speak a little bit to that or as it relates to the, um, showcase that's going to be held on, um, June, is that June ninth or June seventh?
June seventh is our date. Um, so we are working diligently on putting together the, the entire, um, the entirety of the, the program we're looking to, we've spoken about it in the past. Um, June seventh, we will have a business and development showcase here in Top Seal. And the intent is to invite, um, real estate professionals, investors, business owners, restaurants, retail, et cetera, to Top Seal to put a little bit of a attention of what we've been working on and, and trying to attract the businesses we'd like to have here in Top Seal to, to know the opportunity is. And so part of that presentation, and we're looking to do it at the Commons, I should say that it's going to be at the Commons and um, Christie Martino, uh, has been fantastic in letting us, um, have access to that space. Um, we've got a fantastic working group made up of members of the ECDC, um, as well as a couple of other volunteers outside of it. Um, and I want to acknowledge and say thank you for their efforts. Donna Rich, myself, um, are part of that group. And, um, part of it will have some cost. Uh, for instance, we're looking to send wedding invitations to sort of, uh, to, to a number of the people. Um, not inviting them to a wedding, but a similar type of field look saying, here's an event, something you can get in the mail and that's something special, followed by email blast out to people, but the cost for the hard invitations will cost some money. Um, and we also are look, we've also secured a trolley to provide a trolley ride to some of the showcase locations that we'll talk about in the presentation after it. There'll be coffee, there'll be, um, a light lunch as well. Uh, but all that has a cost associated with it. And so, um, the TCP, um, Sarah Guido and her, her organization, uh, whose mission is to help support, uh, economic development in the downtown is, is very graciously, once again, um, volunteered to help support this event. And so we have a contribution from them that'll allow us to, uh, cover, we hope, all the costs. Um, if not the vast majority of those costs associated with the event.
That's terrific. What do we anticipate to be the total cost, Kevin?
We're thinking it, so we're, we're learn, we're, we have some very high level budget numbers that are now, now that we're at this point in this, we're starting to actually cost like the bus is about seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, I believe. Uh, or the trolley, not the bus, the trolley will be seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Um, uh, Christie's going to give me some numbers on cost for the food and, and the coffee and such, um, that they'll support with. Um, and we've got a couple of other things with videographers and other things that might have some costs associated with it. So we're estimating at a very high level somewhere between sixteen hundred and two thousand dollars. Um, but we're going to do everything we possibly can to keep it, uh, within that two thousand dollar threshold.
And how many people do you expect or are you looking forward to inviting to this?
So the, the, um, we've put, been putting together a list of people that, and that we would, we intend to invite. We've started to put together a list of different businesses we'd like to invite, people we might not know, but people who we want to bring into town and, and invite them to join us. Um, we, my goal is to get three hundred invitations out, um, to different people, not all with the hard invitation, the wedding-ish looking invitation, but, um, most are going out that way and some going through the email. Um, so that's going to be the biggest legwork for us, um, tracking down all that information on people and making sure we have a, a database that we already started to work on. We'll make sure we get email addresses, mailing addresses, proper names, so we can send it to people, um, in the next couple of months.
Under the three hundred, what are you anticipating? Like fifty or seventy-five to actually attend?
I would say a hundred, a hundred people would be my, my, my goal. That's my goal is a hundred people. Um, but you know, there'll be a period of making personal phone calls too. I mean, there's people on that list that I know that I'll be say, hey, you should come to this. The Secretary of Housing Economic Development will be here. Got a great panel. We're gonna, we're gonna feed you. Um, and so that's, that's my goal is to get a hundred people in the door.
Okay, um, can I get a motion on the donation?
Motion to accept a donation from the Top Seal Community Partnership to support the business showcase being held June seventh, twenty twenty-two in the amount of two thousand dollars with any unused amount of funds to be directed toward the spring light post flowers for the downtown area.
Second.
Hey, thank you. Any further discussion? Move to roll call. Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez's eye, it passes unanimously. Our thanks to the TCP again for helping us out. That's terrific. Um, okay, next one is the School Resource Officer, uh, Fiscal Year twenty-two and twenty-three agreements. So Kevin, if you could let us know what you'd like us to do today, like, what are we discussing and voting on?
Yes.
That would be great because there are a number of documents, um, which was very helpful in giving some background, but so that we can hone in on what you'd like us to do.
I know, and it's been a little bit of a, of a roller coaster. There's been different paths that have been going on. So the bottom line here tonight is, in a work session very purposely, I wanted to kind of give an update on where we are. Ultimately, the first two documents, the fiscal twenty-two and the twenty-three, um, are documents that are before the board um, for consideration. The next, um, board docs, the SRO fiscal twenty-two, Boxford signed, the fiscal twenty-three, Boxford signed, the Middleton signed. Um, those are all documents which, um, are the, the same version of the ones, the first two. It's the same versions, but the other two communities have signed independently. That's the bottom line. The first two are what's up for consideration. There is, and the, and the other ones are for backup purposes. So you can see that the two other communities have signed the same document. What I would say is that, um, and I, I, I don't want to get too much because it's been a very windy road, but if you remember, there was a long-term SRO conversation that would have, was discussed for fiscal twenty-two and twenty-six. The schools have pivoted to doing two one-years fiscal twenty-two and twenty-three instead of the long-term. Some of the edits that were on the long-term, which is under the administrative content, I didn't want to confuse it by putting it up top into the public content. That represents the last edits from the select board on the long-term. The contract itself on the long-term is basically the same as the single, as the one-year. However, it has some modifications that we made that were not incorporated in the fiscal twenty-two and twenty-three. So I wanted to just be, because I didn't want anyone to say, hey, didn't we make some corrections or some edits, Kev? Um, I just wanted to make sure that people are aware that the version in front of you now does not incorporate any of the long-term modifications to the contract that were provided last July.
So why is it that it turned out that we didn't have that, those things included? Like you said, July, it's been a long time and?
Yeah.
Yeah. So what the, just the October twenty twenty Middleton signed the twenty-one SRO. We signed the same one, uh, November second of twenty twenty for fiscal twenty-one. They took that version. They skipped any modifications on the long-term and just replicated that version for the twenty-two and twenty-three. I don't know why they didn't incorporate those modifications of the long-term. That's what the two other communities were presented with and what they, they approved.
So, so what we should do, I thi- I think you're suggesting is that we should approve, whether it's tonight or the next meeting, uh, the, the two that are in front of us, which is exactly the same as the ones that they signed and is the same as we had signed two years ago in twenty twenty. We had one that we signed, right? Yeah.
That's.
So, so the thing to do to move this ahead, because it's in process, has been for this school year so far and next school year is to get these two things just approved as they are and it matches what the other towns did and we're in good shape, right?
That would be my recommendation.
Now, the only question is, are we going to do this during this meeting or are we going to do it on a Monday meeting? I don't have a problem if we're gonna, this is almost boil a plate that we're working on.
We, go ahead and, and vote it if everyone's comfortable with that. We have been talking about this for quite a while.
Yeah, I'm okay. I feel like if, uh, if we can get this off our plate, that would be fine.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, could I get a motion please?
Motion to approve the SRO agreement with Maskinahmet, uh, district, with an S, with an S, Maskinahmet Regional School District for both years, physical tw- uh, physical year twenty twenty-two and physical year twenty twenty-three as presented, uh, in board docs.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any last discussion? Let's move to roll call then. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez's eye, so it passes unanimously. So Kevin, um, going forward then after fiscal year twenty-three, are they looking to continue to do one-year contracts? Is that the approach? They're not looking to do multi-year?
I haven't asked explicitly that question of Jeff Sands from the schools, but, um, it wouldn't surprise me if the one-years continue. Um, but I, there is some value to doing the long-term one if it, if the SRO is working and the agreement works as well.
Okay. Great. All right. Uh, moving on, the organizational transition. Pass that to you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mad Chair. So I just wanted to update the select board, um, coming out of the budget discussions and the final budget and the decisions made around it. Um, also with Donna Rich retiring a couple of weeks now, just over two weeks, um, I want to start to move on trying to make sure we, we put together the, the system. So I've been going back and forth in different models. I've spent a lot of time with the Chair of the Planning Board, Martha Morrison, and also I've spoke with Bob Moriarty. Um, I've spoken with a number of, um, other people in the community, planners, people in this organization to kind of vet different concepts, different ways we can do it. Biggest concern in my mind is that we have some one-time significant projects coming down on the town that are very, very important and generational, and will set the tone for what we're doing in the future. One of those is the master plan. Um, we've got the MBTA multifamily housing. We have the forty-two, forty B projects. We have, um, MS four and stormwater changes that, that are going to be coming up. We, we do have some funding as we know in the Warren, if it's approved, the town meeting to help us with that, but um, gathering some of that information, having somebody here who can support that consultant would be important and helpful. Um, so there's a number of projects that are, oh, and the, the zoning codification as well, um, the zoning bylaw codification. Um, those are all things, uh, Ms. Morrison and I have talked about, um, things that we recognize are unusual and things that are, are pretty significant. And so what we've been talking about, um, and as recently as earlier today with our ARPA group was the concept of using ARPA funds on a temporary basis for one-time projects that are, that are coming down to help support the planning board and zoning board of appeals as needed, um, for those specific projects. And then looking at Donna Rich's position, which is the procurement position that covers IT, that covers facilities, that covers grants and is our ARPA reporter, um, among many, many other hats that she wears. Um, my concern is posting that position with the admin to this, to the zoning board of appeals and to the planning board might not attract the person that can do all of that. It's very, very unique. And I know we've talked about this through the budget process. The one of the concept I've been thinking about, um, and I haven't fully landed on it, but I wanted to share it with the board for the work session purpose, um, is again, using the ARPA money for, for the planning, the planning components, the new things, the one-time things for say eighteen months plus or minus. That should give us enough time and that times up very nicely with the ARPA timeline to spend that down. And then I'm also looking with Donna's position to possibly pull that back, um, and carve out the administrative components of the planning and zoning as a separate position, a part-time position within the organization that can support the two boards, meeting minutes, postings, packets to the boards, um, help with decision writings, the, the things that Donna's doing right now. Um, and we would, it would be graded at a lower grade than what Donna is in Donna's position, the rest of the duties that Donna's position does, which would allow us to possibly do thirty-five hours, pull back five hours, use those five hours and now flex up to six or seven hours for administrative duties because we're paying at a little bit lower of a rate and be able to hopefully attract the talent for both positions, someone who has experience doing, supporting, planning and zoning to take the administrative component. And also somebody who can then be focused on, um, all the other things that we're doing. I would note too that new, that the purchasing, um, position, the purchasing and project based position that Donna is doing, what she's doing now would also incorporate an economic development component to it so that we would have a presence here during our regular hours. Um, so if somebody comes in with a project, has a basic question, high level, um, the new person could answer that, support that person, direct them to the right place. So we have a presence. If we're doing a down, if we're doing a downtown initiative or a business and development showcase, a person can help support those efforts as well. Um, and it would allow us to have a little bit of a presence outside just the administrative component of what Donna's position currently does while still doing the image, having the support for the administrative component. So in essence, what it would look like is we would have in perpetuity, um, the administrative support for the boards at say six hours plus or minus on a weekly basis. It would have and flow based on what's going on. We would then have an economic development component of Donna's position. It wouldn't take over necessarily, it would just be an additional, it, it wouldn't take anything else off. It would be an additional, um, support on that front. And then we would look for these one-time projects through the one-time funding that ARPA allows us. And I would mention that we did last week, uh, Catherine Gabriel and I did speak, or maybe it was this week, weeks ago, I think it was earlier this week, actually. Days get, get, they blend. Um, we did talk with Renee, uh, over at Powers and Sullivan, who is their expert on ARPA. And that's our auditor as well. And we ran by different concepts, um, with questions that our ARPA group's been working through. One of them was the planner. And she said it's absolutely an eligible expenditure, um, that you can use.
You said absolutely eligible, you just said, right?
It is. Yes. Under the lost revenue, um, it covers quite a bit of different types of things that we might want to use those funds for, including the planner.
So I had a little trouble following along with all of that. Um, like, let me ask you, uh, I mean, i- it is hard to boil Donna's job down to any single part that is the most important, right? And, and I don't think any of us even want to remotely try to do that, but, uh, unplugging the Donna part from it, and let's just say this new person, um, are you talking about taking planning duties away from that position? To put onto a temporary ARPA person or does the ARPA person augment whatever planning duties the new Donna person would have? And, and the reason I ask is because, and, and I don't think anyone here is going to disagree with me. Every conversation I have with you, Kevin, every conversation I have with this board, every Every conversation I have with you, Kevin, every conversation I have with this board, every conversation I have in the town. Everything always comes back to planning, right? Everything's planning, master plan, planning, economic development, housing, all of it, all of it is planning. Uh and so I would be really loathe and worried about taking anything away from our planning efforts.
So we'll be adding, not subtracting. So. The hours that we'd have a presence on a regular basis around economic development. So high level people were promoting events, we're promoting activities, people come in and have questions. That would be Donna's position. It would still be in Donna's position. What I'm carving out is the administrative support to do the minutes, to post meetings, to help with decision writing. Which is what Donna currently does in her capacity. That would cover what we're currently doing. That's basically it. And then on top of that, because of these. Important projects that are coming our way very shortly, we would leverage the ARPA money to allow us to have a planner. Um consultant, emphasizing the consultant and have them be available to us to help us. Navigate these more technical projects. Donna's position. You know, Donna does a great job, but you know, the technical components that a professional planner would bring or a consultant would bring. To help with these projects will allow us to deliver better product at the end of the day. Today and in the future, because decisions we make now will impact the future as well.
Hey, Kevin.
If if I make just one quick follow-up to that, so. Fast forward to the end of the ARPA money, whether that's eight months or however long that that is. Where is planning living at that point? Is it with the Donna position and a admin essentially?
It's then going to be based, yeah, the planner goes away, presumably. I mean, it, you know, we're forecasting. But that that consultant and that consultant's responsibilities as a consultant would no no longer exist in that capacity. Um and then we would go back to. The what we're doing now, but doing it with. A minute taker and an admin assistant, supporting the boards. And somebody in my office who's supporting directly to them as well on the economic development front. So then if future projects come down, we'll be at the same spot we are right now with Donna. But we'd have two people kind of navigating it, one on the more of the administrative support and the other one more of a. In the office, answer questions, try to move things forward. It's not ideal. I, none of this is ideal, but this is. We're trying to make the best of what we have to deliver the best product for the community.
Marshall, are you all set with that answer? Kevin, look, you know this stuff so intimately and and break it down so frequently. I got, I got really lost during that, just to be completely frank. I mean, if you could put. Just lay it out there, boom, six hours or whatever. These are the job responsibilities. This is what we'd be sharing with the planning, with Martha. I need to, I'm sorry, I might be the only one, but I need to see that. I really do. And I understand that it goes away and phases out and all that, but I I I think you've got such a handle on this darn thing that. I don't. And I'd like to see that.
That's great. I can do that. I I, Mr. Jackson and I, maybe three or four months ago, sat down one day. We we, I took a whiteboard and I just kind of drew it out and I think it clicked. So there's definitely some more I can give to you. For today's purposes in the working session, I really just wanted to, the biggest thing for me was just the ARPA money and and what we're looking to do there. Because that's ultimately going to be a contract that probably comes to you folks for signature if we move that forward. In 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 the near future, so.
Yeah, I would suggest sharing it with all of us and then we'll we'll all be able to understand it better and give you more feedback.
Um Kevin, two two quick questions. Um who of those folks that you laid out, the Donna replacement, the admin? The consultant, who's the one who attends all the planning and zoning meetings?
That would be the six-hour plus or minus person who's the administrative support for the board.
Then that, does that person then go back and fill in the Donna replacement? So that person is up to speed on what's been happening in the planning and zoning, so that they can be the person to interact. With people on a daily basis?
Yes, so that would be, there would need to be that collaboration, that communication. Um, you know, my, I should say this as well. My concern with posting the position with everything, including planning and zoning. Is that we're not going to find the person who who can do all of it and do it well. Um we're, yeah, we're very fortunate with Donna, but I've never seen anything like this. And I don't want to disappoint the planning board. I don't want to disappoint the zoning board of appeals. They've come there, we've had a lot of conversations about the needs and I understand them and I I I'm really, really support them and I want to find them. Give them the, what they need. Um but this will allow us though is if we find a next Donna and it is someone capable of what Donna is doing. Where she does everything we're doing with grants and I T regionalization and facilities and budget building. Um and procurement and somebody wants to take on the planning and zoning responsibilities that she's currently doing. Even if we post this as two separate positions, if we find somebody who wants to do a full-time position and is able to do that as well. And we're convinced they can do it as well as Donna, we might just have one person back to where we are right now, no changes on that front. Um I just get the, by breaking it out, it gives us more flexibility. So we might have somebody who's an ex-planner, who wants to pick up a, who's retired, who wants to pick up six hours to stay active. Um we might find, I I know people who live in Topsfield, I know a person who lives in Topsfield, used to be in a planning department. Doing basically exactly this. And she and she would be fantastic for this role if it was something she was looking for six hours in retirement to stay busy. Um so it gives us a little bit of flexibility. That's kind of what the purpose behind this is. I want to make sure we're delivering the best we can to the boards.
Kevin, is there any downside with seeing if you get a response for a person to replace Donna? Um my take on it is that we'd be looking for someone. Optimally, if one person answers this, that has the 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 planning experience. And also the project management skills, because to be a person who interacts or coordinates with the I T. Um a- initiative, they're a coordinator. The the person who is pulling together the grants that other departments are working on is, you know, that's project management as the I T coordinator. So if you've got someone with good project management skills and planning background. It would be great if it's one person, just because we don't have to break it into a lot of piece parts and increase the amount of communication. You know, if someone goes to the meeting and you have to update a person when you come back, that person has to answer questions. Just so that there's not too much confusion. Any downside with attempting it? To replace Donna with a Donna with planning background?
Might just delay us having the bodies that we need to keep things going. And we might lose somebody who might apply, might be interested in the first. I mean, there's always plus and negatives. The the procurement component and the planning component are very different components. Um and then the project management, like you said, Madam Chair, is significant as well. Um so project management, right? So it's procurement, project management, planning and zoning. That's a lot. And to to have. My hope is that we could provide more resources to those two boards with the existing resources that we have. Um than to go back to the the model we have necessarily, because I think we, even with this, we might be able to do it better. But um like I said, that's, that's really, I got to figure that out. I got to get comfortable with that part of it. Like, can I drop that down to four days a week and then carve out those those minute hours um and admin support and and make that work? The using of ARPA is what I. That's the one where we can, we, because those are the projects that make, that keep me up at night and making sure we do them right. And having the support for the boards and for for us ultimately, to make sure we 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 have what we need, so.
Personally, I'm comfortable with the use of ARPA. If the ARPA team is and the the um auditor who says we can use them. This is a very heavy year for planning and zoning in general and for ourselves. Master plan, M B T A zoning, two forty Bs, that there's a lot coming down the pike. So if we have the funds to do that and we can get a true expert in that area, I say go for it. Um the other piece is the piece that I just want to make sure planning and zoning is comfortable with and that we've really laid it out. So that we're not creating more work for ourselves. Every time you add someone to the mix, it can potentially. Um add to the communication issues, et cetera. And and the other is just, what are we uh thinking of to backfill Donna? She's going to be gone in a couple of weeks. As we're still discussing this, what what's the plan to cover uh for, in addition to our own projects, planning and and zoning?
So I'm going to take a few vacation days next week, because I'm not going to be taking vacation thereafter for some time. Um we're going to be busy and we're going to do what we can with what we have. Fortunately, it's happening right around town meeting. And so we're not worrying about the budget and other priorities that would distract um from the things we need to do. Um but it's, it's, the timing of everything, budget was just. I mean, I was still hoping hoping up until the last meeting, a week, two weeks ago, that we were going to be able to find a way to get to a planner. Obviously didn't. Now it's trying to put some real thought and making sure the people who are stakeholders, planning and zoning specifically. Are comfortable with sort of the plan and how we roll it. I don't want to rush out to put Donna in, because this is a. You know, the next person who comes in here could be here for five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, and I want to make sure we get the right person. And so it's. Trying to be very thoughtful and in that, making sure we set ourselves up for the future correctly and the short-term impacts of us trying to. Deal with the procurement, deal with the I T regi- regionalization. Um there is a Z B A meeting that's going to be on the forty B next month, I believe. But planning, I think, has a reprieve for our next, the next month. So we have a little bit of time there. Worst case, I'll find um or I'll have somebody who can do uh the the basics to cover the minutes and and things like that to support the board.
Attend the meetings, the agenda and the minutes.
Just in the interim, I'd have somebody here who might want to pick up a handful of meetings or a couple of meetings just to keep things going for us on a temporary basis.
Speak for everybody, but I, so I'll just speak for myself, but I don't think anyone has an issue whatsoever with the ARPA. Part of this plan. So in boiling down kind of what you've talked about, I don't, I don't imagine anyone has an issue with that. So the question for me is really, the Donna position. A, do we try to carve out some part of that to to focus the position more, yes or no? And if so, which part do we carve out? And it sounds like you're saying, well, we can carve out the planning part and do that differently. I I'm just telling you, I'm concerned ever carving out the planning part of anything. Um in just, again, having just chewed on this for a couple of minutes. Obviously, this is in the early stages, but uh if if I've boiled that down correctly. I think that that would be the kind of pressure point that we need to discuss.
So it's taking out what Donna is already doing and putting it to somebody who can be dedicated to it. You're going to get a better product. I mean, Donna's pulled in multiple directions and she does a great job with what she has, but I I feel unless we get a rock star who wants to do it all. That there are people out there that do this and they do it really well and they're professional, professionally, that's what they do. They take. Meeting minutes and they provide support to planning boards and Z B As. Um and if we could find someone who can do that, I don't know if we will necessarily with what we're proposing right now in time. Maybe there isn't that person out there. I'm hopeful there is, but I think we'll get a better service so that. Right now, it's sort of scattered shot and it's Donna's picking up over here, then picking up over here. I'm dropping in saying, we need to do this. This is the priority today. And she's trying to get the minute, meeting minutes going. It's just um. It's not, it's not the way I think it should be run. And I I'm not saying it's, it's not doing, we're not doing a good job. I just think we could probably do it better and with the transitions, the opportunity to really focus and think through that and make sure we're giving. Any and all opportunities with what we have to work with right now. And so I, again, it, to me, that comes down to just break, I I've got to get, make peace with breaking that out and. Um if it will work for our office for four days a week and take that other, those additional hours and and dedicate them. Um. Or if we put it back in, I'm I'm bringing it up because I'm leaning towards the, that concept, because. I just, I, it gives us more opportunity, more flexibility. And that's where I'm, I I think where I'm going and like Madam Chair said. I got two week, we've got two weeks of Donna and then it's, you know, two and a half weeks. We got to post the position and I just, I don't want it to be something that's out there for for long and then we have to repost it and. You know, I'm doing my due diligence, I promise you that. I'm talking to planners, I'm talking to people who do the minutes for planning boards. Talking with our internal team to find out what what they think, what they're observing. We're doing a lot of due diligence because I want to try to get this right.
Um Kevin, maybe then um we pick this up again, once you've documented what you see as the responsibilities in each position. Um get the feedback from Martha and Bob as to whether this looks good for them. And then the short-term solution, which in two weeks Donna is gone, so what are we doing to cover? Until we fill that position, because even if we made that decision today, it could take a month, month and a half to fill it. So we know in two weeks, we're going to face that issue.
Just for clarity, so you want me to bring this back to the board to further discussion?
As Kevin said, with some, with some uh structure to it, explaining what what the pieces are, what, who's going to be doing what, so to speak.
I think I'm on the ARPA, right?
I'd like to, I'd like to offer one, one piece of discussion here in the midst, this is just one piece of it. In the midst of all this, this about who's doing what. So I want to talk about the six hours of administrative help. For planning board and C B A. That's, that's something you talked about. It may not be the case, because we may do, as Lynn said. Go for a Donna replacement and and work from there. And I I think, I still think that's perhaps the best, but let me just do that particular piece. Because what I remember, for example, a month or two ago, when all of this was discussed, one of the questions was how much time do you, Donna, spend? On planning board and and Z B A. And this is what I remember. So I may be wrong, but what I remember was eight hours a week. And then it was, well, eight hours to ten hours a week. And then it was a better explanation of reality, which said, yeah, that's about an average. But some weeks I spend. Half the time on C B A when there's been a filing. And then the next week, because I just don't have anything to do with them and I do other things. So it sounds to me like the idea of six hours may not be enough based on how much Donna said she was taking, eight hours. And secondly, the issue of how do you deal with this up and down? And maybe somebody will take a job part-time where they. Work sometimes zero hours and other weeks sixteen hours. I I don't know, but I think that needs to be cranked into it if you're going to. Talk about a separate person.
Yeah, so we've spent a lot of.
I do agree with Lynn, uh if if possible, I I think at this point. I I don't see the downside on, if we find somebody that can do Donna's job, I I think that would be great.
So um the hours on a weekly basis will be flexible. So if they're ramping up for a meeting for the planning board or zoning board of appeals. Their time will probably get a little bit heavier around that time of the month. If it, coming out of it, writing a decision, it'll probably be a little heavier during that period. At the end of the day, though, it's going to ebb and flow on a weekly basis based on the need. Now, part of those hours that Donna talked about, we've. I've been talking about this since she announced her, she was going to retire to me months and months and months ago. Um is the fact that there's certain components that are, that are at the meetings. Certain components that are relayed directly post-meeting and prior to meeting. And then there's the other stuff that happens during the week. Where there might be a call about, can you look into this from a chair or a member of the board around something they're working on? Um or is, or somebody stops in with a, with an application with some questions that they want to ask, or they just want to talk about plans. She is acting as a planner at at the end of the day in some capacity. Um when people have questions, she's the one who answers them. Those would be carved out and would then be available for the the four, four-day-a-week person. So that person would be on the ground every day here, four days of five of the week, will be here. To intake people, talk about projects, talk about what zoning allows and doesn't allow when when Joe homeowner walks in the door and says, I've got an issue. Um and they can look up the, the new person can look up the zoning, learn the zoning, be familiar with it. And also provide now a little bit more on the economic development too, that we don't currently have. Um the. So that, that, that eight hours or that Donna talked about incorporated all that. If we carve out just the component for the minutes and the decisions, we're probably closer to six plus or minus. Um on a weekly basis on average, and it's going to be an average, it'll be flexible. So we spent a lot of time looking at that and understanding exactly the role and what's going on currently. Um and that, that's, that's where that number comes from.
Uh I'd, I'd like to make a comment if I may. Uh first of all, I I I don't really have much of a problem with the ARPA funds for doing what you want to do. I would be concerned about, at the end of two years, when the, when we can't use ARPA funds anymore. Um I would be concerned about flushing that position down the drain, because the the need still exists. And what do we do then? Uh that needs to be addressed early on, in my opinion. Um I'm also concerned about the, my, my real concern is the fact.
I'm also concerned about the, my, my real concern is the fact that I am not at all in favor of not providing the planning board and the ZBA the support that they need. And in my opinion, it's a hell of a lot more than taking minutes and, and that kind of stuff. It's, it's more than an administrative function. So we need to make sure that we cover that properly and we need to make sure that we respect those people and give them the force and the, the power that they need to, to perform their jobs adequately. Where this all evolves, I don't know, uh, at this point in time, but now is the time to reorganize that office, in my opinion, because Donna's job has grown topsy-turvy over the last 20 years. And when we need a job to be done and there's nobody to do it, we send it, we give it to Donna or her predecessor. And, and it's evolved over 20 years and in my opinion is pretty ugly. So we got to figure out a way to fix that. But we got to make sure that we support the planning board and ZBA somehow.
All right. So Kevin, if you could document how you envision this rolling out and who's doing what and where and the communication. I think everyone has said they're fine with the ARPA, spending the, the money to get the expertise in to support the large projects. So we're, it looks like we're in favor of that, unless anyone feels differently. But coming back with what we, what will we do in two weeks? Because Donna will be gone. How, how do we support them so that we can look at planning and zoning and tell them, you're all covered? In two weeks, Donna is gone and this is what we're doing. And then second, what does this breakout look like and what are the priorities? What's the biggest skillset that you're looking for in this position? Because to Marshall's point, everything we've talked about has a planning component in it. It seems like such a priority, more so than procurement to me. I'm not sure that there's anything that we're purchasing that's really critical right now. So if, if I had to say a, a skillset, it would be the ability to plan. And then, you know, the, the project management seems to be key because Donna is good at juggling multiple projects and pulling together piece parts. So it seems to me, the planning and the project management seem to be critical components for whoever comes into that job. But it could be that, as you said, the minutes get pushed to the side, literally just typing up the minutes. We've done that with Debbie, we've done that with other boards. Maybe that part could be rolled out separately, just the minutes. But the putting together the, of the agenda and working with the boards to say, what's a priority, what has to happen each, each month? Being present at those meetings to understand the issues so that they don't have to be recommunicated after a meeting seems to be important. I would say, I, I wouldn't want to do the telephone, you know, they said this, well, I, I didn't see how they reacted or I missed that particular key fact that came up or issue. I think they should be there for that. So fine with breaking out minutes, but the rest of it, I'm a little concerned about. I want to make sure that planning and zoning, which is really getting swamped, has a person here and, and ready to help them and ready to help the, the public or any projects that come up that involve planning. So if you could document that for us, I think it'd be great. Any other comments to Kevin?
Uh, I'd just like to comment, Cam made a point while ago and Kevin, I'd like to, Rick, excuse me, remind, remind you that three, four months ago, you and I put together a flow chart of the way you planned this to happen. Uh, and, and, and if you could redo that in a little more sophisticated manner than what we did on the whiteboard that day, it would, it would be a great help for all of us, quite frankly.
Doesn't have to be that sophisticated.
Yeah, even bullet points, I mean-
Bullet points are dynamite.
That's right.
Hours, bullet points, fine.
So I'd like to talk to the ARPA part. So the, the ARPA part, I believe everyone understands it, Kevin, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that this is a only for one-time purpose, one-time, it's a one-time purpose, it's not an ongoing purpose. So in answer to the, the things that Boyd, you suggested, you know, what are we going to do after? The idea is that whatever's being done by the ARPA person is really only some special peak kind of things that need to be done and not ongoing things in any way. So there shouldn't be a problem at any point of that person going away when these particular things that Kevin very clearly laid out. He mentioned the MBTA, the 40Bs, the master plan and the MS4, I'll, I'll discuss those in a minute. He meant, those are the things and hopefully some of those, some of those will hopefully get finished. I don't mean go away, but get finished. So it wouldn't be a problem. While we're talking about this, however, the one time, and this is just for general planning and I, I can tell you, I was very delighted to note it when we got a pandemic nursing, one of, one of the things that we did there. It was for one day less than 18 months. I think you want to keep this in mind. I don't know where all the statutes are on this and case law, but I think it's NLRB regulations. As we all know, particularly Microsoft got in trouble with this. If you have a contractor that's been working with you for more than 18 months, then they are employees with benefits. So I think any contracts that we write, we, we do want to make sure that it is for less than 18 and does not go over and continue on after eight, after the 18 months, because I think we have some exposure there. Now, ba- back to the point of what the person, the ARPA, quote, the ARPA person would be doing. One of them, the first one was master plan. So on the master plan, we have a grant for $100,000 and we have in our STM roughly $25,000 that was left over from Copper Mine Road, which is a little bit more, I guess, than 25,000. So as we said, planning, 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 but we're dumping a lot of resource into planning. It's not like we're, we're skinny-ing down. And so I'm not sure why we need yet, because at one point, I remember talking, did we really need the additional person, the, the 25,000 for master plan? And yes, yes, yes. Okay, so we got that. And now we're asking for essentially a, a third person or not really a third person, but a, a second person that's going to, necessary to do master plan. I don't understand that. It, it doesn't make sense to me. And the 40Bs, yeah, those things need to be dealt with there. They, there's one that we have and that is being dealt with. So, and it's the sort of thing that was done by Donna. Granted, it's a planning thing that was done. MBTA, we wrote our response to the state, the state, as far as I'm concerned, has a, a problem, that they have problems that aren't going to, it's not going to work here the way it is. They'll make some changes, but the MBTA is not for Topsfield and Topsfield has, is foolish to try to match up with this and take the grants. The grants are just not worth it. And I think that's a very important point that we need to understand and explain to the residents, because I think the residents have a better understanding of it than we do. I saw it on one of the, the radio, the TV stations where they were going through it and essentially saying, yeah, it was a problem. MS4 definitely fits in this particular thing because MS4 was going to be going on for some time. So maybe the person would be quoted one time on MS4, but I don't think so. We already got a contract for somebody going out to do it. And it's unfortunately going to take Gary's time. I, Gary can weigh in on it. But this MS4, having read the requirements, the things that we're paying for, for $50,000, Gary's going to be a busy guy. So those are my thoughts on, or questions essentially as to what this one-time person is going to do. But as long as it's one-time with the ARPA funds and under 18 months, I, I, I can agree with that. That's, that's ARPA funds, it's the same to use it, so use it.
Yeah.
Marshall, you going to say something?
I, I, I mean, it's semi-off topic. I would just strongly disagree with what you said about the MBTA thing. It's neither just going to go away, nor should we just kiss away the grants either. I mean, it's still a thing in process and that is precisely why we would need somebody to continue to work on that.
But I don't know that it's a, I don't know that's a one-time person. If it was going to happen, it certainly would be going over a long time. I, I just don't think that fits in with a one-time. If, if somebody can make a, a case for why it's a one-time person, I'll listen. But assuming that there are these one-time things, in spite of my concern about what that represents, the expenditure from ARPA, that feels good to me.
Kevin, were you going to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So on the, on the MBTA, there's going to be a lot of, if we pursue, and I do believe we need, we need to professionally vet it, like every other community will with their planners, to, to come up with why we can't or an option to move forward to town meeting, if that's where we go. But there needs to be good professional data that looks at it. I don't think as it's presented, it makes any sense for Topsfield, we've all talked about that. But I think that there's a, there's a need and a value to having, if you're using ARPA funds in this case for one time, to that point, because next year, town meeting, as it's presented, we'll have to bring a zoning recommendation to, to the floor for vote. If we're, if we're, if the jates don't change and depending on what the, what, what the board decides to do, if they want to bring into it or, or not. The master plan, I've talked to a number of communities that have done master plans, small and large. If you don't have, the master plan consultant is helping to organize meetings, they provide, they, they, they provide workshops with the community, they do a lot of really great work. They craft the document for us that, that's then presented with recommendations. But all that information they need to put that together and those conversations with the community, that's so essential in a master plan, there needs to be somebody on the ground supporting that. I had coffee with a resident who has 38 years of planning experience, has done master plans, lives here in town, retired six years ago. I told him what we're trying to do to get relativity around the proposal that I'm, I'm sharing with you about the the, the planner to support these projects. He said, absolutely, it won't be successful without a planner. Martha Morrison, our planning chair, said, if we don't have the proper support for a master plan, I don't see how we can do a master plan. It is critical that we have somebody during that period who can organize, coordinate between the consultant, who's, you know, doing multiple communities, who's dedicated to Topsfield to help ensure that the process moves along efficiently, effectively and keeping Topsfield in mind, what our culture, what our character is and what we want to be as a community.
Thanks, Kevin. And I think we have support for ARPA, so just take the comments for what they're worth, but we're, we're saying move ahead with it. So if I could, just because we're coming up on two hours here, move on to the next item unless someone has any closing comment or statement.
No.
Okay. All right. The next item is to update our fiscal year '22 meeting schedule. So this would be to add a meeting on May 16th, following the election on May 5th, so that we could appoint officers and signatory authority. I did reach out, and Debbie reached out to Raphael to make sure that date was good with him, since he's not here to speak to it. And it is. So if the 16th is good with everybody here, we could add that as a Zoom meeting.
It's, it's really not for me. It, it's really difficult for me to add ad hoc stuff like this. However, if it's not a two-hour meeting, then I can leave what I'm doing and do this. But I really need some sort of timing parameters around this one, Lynn. I, I can't just pop it up, sorry.
What was the date again?
16th.
Of this month?
May.
I was going to say, we're already past, that's in a couple of days, hold on.
So how, how, how much time are you looking for with this?
Sorry. 15 minutes.
15 minutes is fine, that's fine.
Yeah, it's literally just to elect the officers and the signatories.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So we do that at, at seven o'clock and yeah, we could schedule another meeting at that meeting and we'll have it lined up just so that we have a couple of meetings going forward to set the schedule and start business flowing. So that would be really quick. We'll, we'll send that out ahead of time and we'll just vote on whether that schedule looks good to everybody. But we'll keep it very quick, Cam.
So a Monday, May 16th, very quick meeting at seven o'clock.
Yes. I have a motion to accept that, vote to add it to the schedule.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Great. Roll call, Mr. Jackson. Was that a yes, Boyd?
You're on mute, Boyd.
You're on mute.
Aye, aye.
Okay, Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, aye.
And Ms. Bermuda's aye, so it passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll send out the, the meeting schedule and the agenda for that.
Great.
Okay, if there is not anything else, we can get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So a second? Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermuda's aye, it passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.